Special work session will come to order. I don't know who's making the presentation for the University of Maryland Medical System on the Laurel Hospital. But here's the ground rules. You've got a total of one hour. Actually, you have 55 minutes. Okay? And you can make your presentation. Council may ask questions. And if we've got any time left over, if there's any other questions, okay? Microphones on, and you're on television. So you need to smile.
I'm smiling.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Mayor Mo, council president, council members, and members of the community for having us here tonight. Is the mic on?
It is.
All right, and I am smiling. My name is Sherri Perkins. I'm the executive vice president and chief operating officer of the University of Maryland Capital Region Health. We are pleased to be here tonight to provide an update on our health system and specifically on work here in Laurel. My colleagues sharing the podium tonight will be Dr. Trudy Hall, vice president of medical affairs and interim president for Laurel Regional Hospital, Mark Wasserman, senior vice president of external affairs, and Darrell Mealy, vice president of construction and facilities, both of University of Maryland Medical System, and Veronica Ford, vice president, human resources for University of Maryland Capital Region Health. And I note council president at 55-minute parameter. Our objectives are to address the Laurel Hospital transition to the Laurel Medical Center, health campus development opportunities, constructions on the health campus, support for our workforce, and community outreach. As you know, we completed our affiliation with University of Maryland Medical System on September 1st, 2017, and we believe we are better positioned to meet community needs for healthcare here in Laurel. Key objectives of the affiliation with University of Maryland Medical System include improving access to care, including primary and specialty care in Prince George's County and the Laurel and Beltsville community, strengthening care coordination and the care continuum through alternative and additional levels of care, including those that we will speak to tonight, improving our ability to invest. Critical component of our affiliation was our ability to invest in many of the services that we will address tonight, and additionally, integrating university-based teaching and research, making these services available directly, and linking to these services through access and care coordination. I will not review this organizational structure in detail of the University of Maryland Medical System or the university system of Maryland, except to point out the entities of the University of Maryland Medical System on the left, and to note that we are the newest affiliate of the University of Maryland Medical System as the University of Maryland Capital Region Health. We are, of course, pleased to have relationships with the university system of Maryland, including physician faculty of the University of Maryland School of Medicine. Finally, before I hand off to Dr. Hall, we are principally here tonight to speak to changes in how we provide care. I became a registered nurse more than three decades ago. For most of those decades, our pattern has been to test, treat, and repeat, with emphasis on sick care and hospitals, and not much prevention or outpatient care. A very interesting Wall Street Journal article published just yesterday made this and other points. We are now working much more in our relationships with patients and families on how we design care to prevent, manage, and coordinate. We'd like to discuss how we make that much more specific to our patients for the Laurel community in our time to follow. I'll hand off now to Dr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor Mo and city council. So part of my comments are to give some education regarding the trends in healthcare, and that would kind of help to frame the conversation regarding the changes that we're proposing for Laurel Regional Hospital. So the trend across the nation has been the number of hospital admissions has been declining over the last, really, five to 10 years. Regarding state of Maryland, there's also been a steep decline in the number of patients that are actually admitted, starting really since 2012. That percentage is 12.5% of a decline within that timeframe between 2012 and 2017. So what we're seeing is the trend of more patients that are being placed in what's called the observation level. That was actually determined as another level of care started by CMS and Medicare regarding patients that need less than 48 hours of care. And if you need more than two nights of a stay, you would be considered as an inpatient in a hospital. And also, that trend also has been that 75% of surgeries are now being performed in the outpatient or ambulatory setting. When we look at the actual patients that are coming to University of Maryland, now called University of Maryland Laurel Regional Hospital, and we looked at the patients that actually are coming and their age group, a lot would think that the patients are primarily elderly patients that are coming to the hospital. But based on the community needs assessment that was done for Prince George's County, our data is actually showing that more than half of the patients are really between the ages of 18 and 49 years of age, with the biggest group being between 18 and 34 years. And we look at the top 10 diagnoses of when, why a patient may come. The top one is injury, commonly bumps and scrapes and car accidents and all those things that happen that you may need to come for immediate care. And after that, really, more respiratory, musculoskeletal, digestive, as well as bladder or infection problems. But those patients who do come to the emergency room, what a percentage of those patients that actually are discharged after being seen clinically? That number of 75% of the patients are discharged. And currently at Laurel, the trend is that about 5% are in the observation category, needing less than 48 hours of stay, as well as about 5% are being transferred, and 12% of the patients are actually being admitted staying for more than two midnights. And for those patients that are admitted, what are their diagnoses? Primarily, the largest group is cardio-cuminary, or patients with cardiac or lung diseases. The next category is patients with problems with the digestive system. After that, there will be surgical problems, and along that kind of parallel are neurological So it is no secret that around two years ago, that the dimensions board made a decision to transition Laurel Regional Hospital. Unfortunately, the word went out by the media that Laurel Regional Hospital was closing. Not that we were transitioning in the trends of healthcare and transitioning to provide the care with the current restraints that have been going on with the healthcare system. And for many of you may not know that the healthcare and partial review commission that determines the rate that hospitals pay around that same time changed the way that Maryland hospitals were being paid, being paid on a global base reimbursement, which is almost like a flat fee of services. And the hospitals then have to figure out, how do you provide those services based on the dollars that you're given? And what that has done is primarily driven the cost from volume to value. So before, more patients meant more revenue. No longer that is the case. So we all know again, two years ago, that decision was made, and with the collaboration of Mayor Mo and University of Maryland Systems, with Dr. Steve Bartlett, our chief surgeon, and now the CMO for the system, came together to form the strategic planning work group. Mayor Mo and Steve Bartlett, Dr. Bartlett co-chaired the committee. Members of that committee was Honorable Mary Lehman, Honorable Fred Smalls, who was present, Bill Garterd, you all know, Mr. Donawa Ulrich, at that time was the current Laurel Regional Hospital board chair, Brad Freeman, Prince George's County executive rep and chair of the University of Maryland Capital Region Health Board, Dr. Sherri Perkins, whom you've heard from earlier, Honorable Robert Capito, a business leader, Christian Jones Bryce, our VP of the General Affairs for the University of Maryland Medical System, and Brian Frankel, assistant fire chief of the Prince George's Fire Department and EMF. From that committee was formed work groups and subcommittees. And the subcommittees were a compilation of over 100 stakeholders regarding physicians that practice at Laurel, physicians who do not practice at Laurel or in the Beltsville area, as well as a lot of our elected officials. We had representation of the union, as well as University of Maryland School of Medicine physicians, the Prince George's Health Department representatives, and really other volunteer services and other community members as part of these work. There was emergency medicine, campus development, clinical operations, on-campus services, workforce development, behavioral health, and volunteer service. So those committees met from December of 2016 to approximately May of 2017, and came together for recommendations that went to the UMS board in July of 2017. An example of one of the committee's recommendations, which was behavioral health services, was to focus more on outpatient services and preventative care. One of the most common reasons why patients come back to the hospital in less than 30 days are because of behavioral health issues. There are not enough community resources, and not enough outpatient clinics, as well as patients that don't have the ability to have access to those services once they leave inpatient hospital. So the plan was, and recommendations were, to look at expanding partial hospitalization program, which we have at Laurel, but growing that program, and also adding substance abuse. It is no secret with the opioid epidemic regarding the number of patients that we have that come to the emergency room with some substance problems, as well as co-diagnosis with mental disorders, and looking at having programs that can focus on those areas and actually address those areas so those patients don't have to come to the hospital. So along with the other subcommittees, pretty much the recommendations for the transition of Laurel is from a full-service hospital to a 24/7 ED with critical care stabilization, so continuing to provide the same ED services that we provide now, short-stay medical care, which are patients that need to be in the hospital overnight for 48 hours or less, surgery same day, as well as overnight for surgery cases, as well as managing cases that have a low acuity, behavioral health as an outpatient expand on partial hospitalization program, pharmacy to support these services, labs to support these services, as well as full imaging to support these services. This new facility that's being proposed, and you all have pictures of it on boards, and you all can come afterwards and take a look at the facility, and we will talk more about it, but this facility represents a $15 million University of Maryland investment into the Laurel community in addition to anticipated private investment in the surrounding medical campus. So this is all pending regulatory approval. The Maryland Healthcare Commission has to give permission for us to change. So part of that is submitting an application, which we have already submitted the first phase, which is permission to relocate our inpatient acute rehabilitation and chronic care services, which are primarily patients that are on ventilatory machines, to Prince George's Hospital. Currently, Prince George's Hospital has the stroke certification program, as well as a trauma center, so the majority of our patients currently are actually coming from Prince George's Hospital, but to move those services to the hospital so that the patients can stay and be managed underneath that level of care. The next phase is to transition from inpatient medical services to short-stay, which I spoke about before, which means less than 48 hours of care. Transition inpatient behavioral health to more focus on outpatient ambulatory and more preventative programs. Looking at these services, if we have the approval for them, the summer of the fall of the phase two, which is going to be the transition, and current operation in our current building, starting to break ground for the new building by spring of 2019, with anticipation completion of moving into the new building with no interruption of the clinical services by December of 2020. And again, this is pending that construction will be completed by that time, and also pending regulatory approval. Other services and capabilities, we have some current campus programs that we will continue. We will continue our primary care, our women's health program with OB-GYN services, a lung health program to handle COPD and asthma, as well as sleep medicine. We have a wound care center that has received the Center of Excellence three years in a row, so to continue our wound care center provides those services, as well as our chronic pain management program. Anticipating campus programs that we're considering and we'll be working on, wellness and weight loss, which we know really is pretty much the nidus for many of our chronic diseases, and looking at how we can actually have those programs for the community to do some prevention, as well as chronic disease management, diabetes and a metabolic center, advanced care planning, neurology services, as well as telemedicine consultation to be able to help support us in our new building, using our resources from University of Maryland to be able to get that level of access. So why now? What's driving our actions? Healthcare is changing. I know you may hear this many, many times, but let's look at what some of our other partners are doing. So we have the Upper Chesapeake System, which is part of University of Maryland, their campus, Hartford Hospital. They're actually in the process of getting permission for the same thing that we're doing, and matter of fact, they're a little bit ahead of us. So they've already submitted their application in August to be able to change from inpatient services to short-stay, as well as ED services. The difference between them and us, the primary difference, is that we are looking to retain surgical services. We also have a hospital down by the shore, who's actually looking to be right behind us in wanting to make those changes. And there's been recent talks about a DC hospital that's also looking to do this. As well as trends across the nation, there actually have a trend called microhospitalization, where you're actually still able to provide that accurate care, but in a more of a condensed way that actually meets the community needs. Also, the environment is competitive, and the new technology over time has really decreased the need for the traditional hospitalization. So right here, right time, right setting, as part of a lot of our education to the community, we really wanted to break this down into patient vignettes, so you can really see, what does this mean for me, my family, and for the other members of the community? So if we have a 65-year-old male, a serious automobile accident, the EMS will determine that, or ambulance will determine that, that patient needs to be blown out by a helicopter to receive care. Right here, it's complex. Right time, a very high risk. Right setting, a trauma center, whether it be shock trauma or Prince George's Hospital Center. That patient currently does not come to Laurel. That patient still cannot come to Laurel. A 50-year-old female, type 2 diabetic, lightheaded, confused, elevated blood sugar, on a finger stick. Right here, that patient needs to be seen quickly. Right time, they're at risk. A right setting, that patient would come to Laurel now, and that patient will continue to come to Laurel when we transition. 27-year-old female, suspected overdose, possible suicide attempt, needing an inpatient psych review. Right here, emergency care. Right time, high risk. Right setting, that patient comes to Laurel now. That patient will continue to come to Laurel to get the psych stabilization, as well as management of their medical condition. 60-year-old male, retired smoker, slurs deep in a facial duff. Sounds like what? A stroke or some kind of neurological condition. Right here, emergency care. Right time, they're at risk. And the right setting, even though Laurel is not a certified stroke center, we handle strokes, acute strokes every day, and we actually do give what we call the clot clusters to be able to remove the clot if the patient is appropriate, and then we'll stabilize that patient and care for them, or we will plant them. A 20-year-old female, low-grade fever, persistent cough, sore throat. Right here, is not emergent. This is probably one of the most common symptoms right now with flu season. The right time, they're at risk. The right setting, that patient needs to go to urgent care or to their family physician's office. They do not need to come to emergency room or to associate care staff. So with the education as a backdrop regarding what our services were asking permission to transition to, there was a lot of work that was done with the assistance of University of Maryland, our attorneys and consultants, to really look at the recommendations that we will be proposing to the MHCC. MHCC actually has exact formulas of what you have to get permission for. So it's not that we can just say we want these number of beds, we want these number of services. There are actually formulas that you have to have to do those calculations of what you can get permission for. So what was considered was the Laurel Service Area. Laurel has grown tremendously, really, in the last five, 10 years. We know about the Pantera development and some of the proposed plans for that area. Also, when it comes to the number of emergency bays that we can actually ask permission for, there are actually guidelines by the American College of Emergency Physicians to how many beds that you can have in an emergency center based on your population, as well as your utilization. Usually, our ED, emergency room, is busiest from usually 3:00 PM till probably about 9:00. And then, at the end of the day, we have to take the reality pill, which is really that Washington Adventist Hospital, Adventist Hospital facility is opening in White Oak, which is eight miles away, and it will be a brand-new school for this hospital, and to anticipate what will be the changes that will occur in that facility being built. And right now, I think the projection is probably by the summer of 2020 that that will be completed and completed. Also, we look at what are our outpatient surgery cases that are now growing at Laurel currently and anticipated growth with our elderly population. We're expecting a growth in orthopedic. We started the pediatric dentistry program three years ago at Laurel. It was almost a six-to-nine waiting time for a child to actually get oral surgery at a hospital. Thus, we started the program because of the community need, and that program has been rapidly growing. We also look at an increase in observation cases and decrease, really, in inpatient cases. Now, there are actually criteria of why a patient will be admitted. So it is signs and symptoms, as well as the results of tests and a clinical judgment that actually goes into a formula to say that you are admitted. So again, you have to meet those criteria for the care reimbursement service. Also, looking at behavioral health, creating a dedicated behavioral health area within the emergency center that is secluded, so those patients can get privacy and can be managed in a manner of security in having them within the emergency center. And then looking at these behavioral health committees, then those programs is talked about before. So I'm actually going to turn over the presentation to Mark Wasserman.
Good evening, Mayor, council president, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to offer a few words. The word that comes to my mind as we talk about the campus development is steward. You are entrusting us with 48 extremely important real estate. We have serious responsibility, bond, in the way that we approach the use of this precious and valuable land resource. We are committed to redefine its use, the way that Dr. Hall was describing, and bring value to the Laurel community and the Beltsville. Without doubt, I will tell you, we are excited by the potential. It's going to be ongoing work. It won't happen overnight. And our aim is to engage knowledgeable community stakeholders to work along with us as we go through the process of redeveloping campus. Many of these names, I think, I don't know. So in the end, what is it we're trying to accomplish as we approach the development of the Laurel Campus? As you've heard, and I think the product will bear out, we have the opportunity to create a 21st century health and wellness camp that will keep pace with the trends Trudy has described for you. What's our obligation to do? First and foremost, to boost community health and well-being. Second, I think we have the opportunity here to create a center of employment and commerce that will contribute to the lifeblood of the Laurel community. And I think if we do this well and have an aesthetic perspective on this, we can produce something that will be viewed as a real asset to the Laurel community. So a little bit about the campus itself and some of its features. I'm going to go back and forth. So you guys are familiar with the curve here. So as my colleague Darrell will be sharing with you, the high point in this campus is where the Laurel Medical Center will be. It will be a beacon. It will be right at that prime intersect. It will be, it will make access much more smooth for EMS vehicles. I want to, in fact, the second piece is timing. This isn't going to happen all at once, but once we start, based on what we think we know from market, we believe that we will be able to build out this campus with a strong health and wellness theme over five to seven years. The second piece is, as you may know, this is not a flat piece of land. It's a bowl, and the hospital main block is the bottom of the bowl. It's a side. So it will be a while before we're able to fully build out the campus. And once you take into account what's available for development, there's about 25 acres, and we're confident that those 25 acres will receive a fair amount of interest. Coming to the end there, President. What I want to stress with the next couple of slides, we haven't done this in a vacuum, engaged serious consulting expertise. Cushman Wakefield, they've been with us all along the way. And one of the pieces of the formula that they have brought to evaluating the market potential for the campus was to talk to lots of people, some from within the community, others were clinicians, and others who might find to consider investment in this new exciting campus. So this is just simply a recitation of kinds of research used in evaluating campus. And Cushman Wakefield was tireless in reaching out and listening. This is what you may know, but it's depicted in a thoughtful way for you. This is your market area. The green is the prime market. The yellow is the secondary market. And there's a, looks like there's a real sweet spot opportunity for us just to the north, just to the north. So I'm going to conclude just by saying we're excited, want your involvement as we go. And I'm going to turn this over to my colleague Darrell to talk about this. Oh, I left out a slide. Forgive me. This slide, it was Cushman Wakefield's quick evaluation of our campus. What are its strengths? What are its weaknesses? And you know all of that. But the important part of it, I think, was to have a third-party, serious real estate expertise take a look at and attach away this 48 of our opportunity, and really validate what we think we know about the prime potential for the redevelopment of the Laurel. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Darrell Mealy, who I think will go into more detail on the first investment.
Good evening. So my part in this is facilitate planning, designing, and implementation of the pneumatic and we've been working on this for probably about a year, coming up and we've been working on this for probably about a year, coming up with different concepts based on the programs that have been established. And the way the building is set on the site, it's going to sit at the corner of Van Dusen County, and you'll be able to access it from different sides. We have decided to have the emergency side of the program to be front center facing Van Dusen. So this elevation really shows you the main entrance where the emergency department would be. So if you're a patient coming in, you'll enter in off of, there's a couple of different directions to that site, but it's facing Van Dusen, so very accessible and very visible. The next rendering is on the opposite side, and this is going to be the entrance to the surgical suite. It would be on the first floor. So as you can see underneath the logo, that would be our main entrance there. So back on the first floor, we're the emergency department. This is a very consolidated program that's very efficient. And I can outline just the colored blocks for people to follow. So the entrance into the emergency department is actually at the bottom of the page, and the area that's in hand is really the emergency department. There's roughly 20 emergency bays there. There is a behavioral health unit, crisis unit that is off to the right, at the dogleg right of the L. There are four bays there as well. The ambulance, emergency ambulance drop-off kind of highlighted just above the behavioral health unit. There's enough space parking there for ambulance. And right outside of that ambulance bay, there is a helipad there as well. So everything is very immediate, the emergency department. There is a resuscitation bay within that unit for emergent patients. The upper left-hand piece of the first one in purple is the observation unit. There are 10 observation beds planned to go in there for a 48-day or less. And that's kind of, it's tied directly to the emergency department, so it's also could be used to flex between emergency beds. The observation unit would be built same as the emergency department. In those rooms, they would have individual private beds. On the lower part of the page, the light blue, that is the outpatient psychiatric day program. And those would be in on the left side. The center core space is a combination of outpatient or inpatient imaging, lab, there's pharmacy, and then there's general core space as well inside or area. So the lower level, the ground level, is the surgical. Currently, we have the building size for four ORs for a full build-out, but right now we are only intending to build two ORs, two procedures. There is capacity to build the second two ORs. Back to earlier comments about sizing within the state, within MHCC, we don't think we have the volumes at this point in time to request four ORs. But we're hopeful that as our volume increases, we'll get four ORs back. The second two ORs would be built into that white block blocked out area, so the actual footprint planned for from the beginning. And that is my piece.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'll give you a quick update on the workforce. What I'd like to tell you is we have created an email that we ensure that anyone who has questions about what's going on will email us. We commit to answering within 20 minutes. In addition, we've distributed question and answers that typically come up, that people have what they have stuck handy, that they can reference. We've held two town hall meetings that basically go over here is what's happening, here's what's going to happen. We have one-on-one sessions that are ongoing where the recruiting team goes around and speaks to individuals weekends, nights, during the day, so that they understand what's going on and opportunities to talk to them. And certainly, we make sure that we keep the union updated. In addition, I'd like to tell you that we have hosted job fairs at Laurel. We are still, we are still continuing to hire. We are partnering with French Georgia Community College, and what they have done for us, and it's been such a great partnership, is they will do the CNA certification class here at the Laurel Regional Center, and we will pay for the class. In addition, we're giving the people the time off to go. Their only skin in the game is that they can make up the time, but we are allowing them the time off to go. We also are hosting a job shadow day so that people from Laurel can go over to French Georgia Hospital and shadow with some of their peers to see what's like over there. Also, just get a feel for going back and forth and what that'll be like. We will have a bus come over, pick them up, and take them back, back and forth, so that they certainly feel welcome to what we have going on over there. We offer computer skills classes, and it's not just your everyday computer skills class. Our person that's teaching those classes have actually gone out to all of our employees and asked them, tell me where you are, what level you need, so that we can ensure that the classes we offer are the classes that will be most beneficial to those that.
Community outreach. So to kind of end and wrap up, I want to kind of highlight some of the things that we've been doing out in the community. We formed a community engagement work group with members of the University of Maryland marketing and communication team, as well as now the University of Maryland Capital Region Health Team. We've also had the volunteer services, members of the Laurel Auxiliary, and also some community members, members of the medical staff leadership that actually has been on this committee to look at how do we reach out to the community and educate them. Some of our members in our community still think that Laurel Regional Hospital is closed. So how do we actually communicate? Number one, no, we're not closed. Number two, this is our services that we will be transitioning to, so that they are well educated. Also, we've also met with our EMS providers. Laurel is very unique in that it covers four counties. So we've actually reached out to Montgomery, Anneau-landale, and Howard County EMS providers to be able to talk to them about some of the changes with the hospital, and also to get their feedback about any concerns that they may have regarding the changes that's going on. So we've also looked at marketing, communications, community health benefits. We've looked at our ambulatory services, population health, our volunteer and auxiliary services, and our show affairs, all being a part of the community. Many of you may or may not know, in December 8th of 2017, we had our community winter health fair. We had over 80 attendees from the city and county of Laurel, and we did health screenings, flu vaccinations, as well as wellness demonstrations and healthy cooking. The city of Laurel had their health fair January 28th, and I know it was a success, so congratulations on a well-attended health fair. You had 150 attendees, and we were really happy to partner with you to provide on the site screening. We did 60 cholesterol screenings, 30 flu shots, and we did some balance testing for some of the elderly and old French. We also have some new information and materials. First one is introducing to the community who we are. We're now part of University of Maryland, and kind of having some conversations about some factors regarding the transition. And then, as we were going out and talking to the community, many of them still don't know when to go to urgent care and when to go to emergency. So we provided this pamphlet and a fact sheet that we've been giving out to some of the senior centers that we've spoken to, as well as some of the senior communities and some of our other stakeholders, as in nursing homes, and giving them education, but providing this as a pamphlet, give them some guidance as they're trying to decide what's the best level of care for them. So I want to end by telling a story. My story is that my 88-year-old mother has lived in Florida for over 30 years, and in spring, she said she no longer wanted to live in Florida and wanted to be closer to her children and grandchildren and wanted to move to Florida. My first choice of where she should live was Laurel, Maryland. My mother packed up, sold her house, and now currently is living in Laurel. So as I personally think of the services that are being provided for our community, I think of the services that I would want my mother to have. If she was to fall or became short of breath or had anything that occurred, I would want her to be able to get world-class care, immediate care in the community where she lives. So I just want to end with that personal story, and I just want to tell you she loves Laurel, and she's happy that she made the move. But thank you very much for your attention, and I will end with any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Any wants to start questions? I can't believe there's no questions. Fred?
I don't really, Mr. President, have any questions. Obviously, I've been pretty close to the ground on development. I just want to say, and my voice is beginning to return to me, how very proud I am to have been playing a role in helping shape what healthcare is going to be for Beltsville Laurel area. This is an exciting time, in my opinion. Not only do you have the responsibility of, you know, providing the healthcare service, but you also have the responsibility, as you've heard me say many times, in making sure that the word gets out to our community as to what's coming. And I think this is a good start. I think more things like this, and the distribution of exactly where these kinds of printed materials and other things go, is certainly going to help people understand that Laurel Regional Hospital, in whatever form that it takes, is going to be here in this community and continue to serve with dignity and a high level of care for all of the residents in this region. So again, I'm very pleased to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Smalls. I also want to educate you, we've already gone out to probably around 10 to 12 groups. I mean, we literally have about two to three large groups that we are talking to. The feedback in the community has been enlightening. Some of the feedback is, a lot of them don't understand a lot of factors about healthcare. So as we're explaining the change in Laurel, we're also explaining to them some of the basic concepts of healthcare that they really do not have the opportunity to hear. I do want to acknowledge the team, because we are a team. So we have Carolina Cass at University of Maryland, as well as Janine Matthews, as well as Sean Tate, a part of our marketing and development team that have really gone out. We're looking to do our regal theater ad. We're wanting to show our new pictures and let, you know, the community know, you know, before the movie, that this is a new Laurel, and we're getting that right out. So I think now, as we're kind of forming a little bit more tangentially what we will become, that now we can really go out to the community and spread the word and answer their questions. And we are accountable to all the questions and what their expectations are. So it's been very interesting. But thank you for your support. Maybe your support will have been part of the process, because we could not have done this without your support, as well as your input. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, I just have one other question.
Ms. Smalls?
Dr. Hall, would you, or members of your team, talk to us a little bit about, in terms of getting the word out, what steps you're taking to communicate to our non-English-speaking community?
I'll be doing a case study to talk to them. Sure. I think...
Don't forget you're on television, so you got to come to the microphone.
So smile, right? Sure. I think a large part of that is the input that we've been getting from those who we've been actually talking to that's on our staff and that group that's made up of members of the community, members of the auxiliary and the volunteers. And so right now, we have slated to look at some of the Spanish-speaking churches that would be one of the primary monk methods that we would look at initially. And then, of course, the feedback that you all, from your different constituents, that you can offer us, then we would take that lead. We get a suggestion, we take it, and then we start to make those calls and then contact us to see where, what's the availability for us to go with any of the presentations.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions?
I have just a comment to make.
Go, Mr. Dewalt.
This is very refreshing to me. When this first came out in my neighborhood, the people were afraid. They were, a lot of anxiety, a lot of them were mad, a lot of emotions in it. And I went to the meetings, and there was a lot of angry people yelling, voicing their opinion. And I went to, with the members of 1199, I showed up at Annapolis and spoke three times down there. And to have this sort of thing that I could pass on in our community is very, very enlightening, and it's just so much brighter than what they were going through. And you were right, the mentions, actually, their perspective that they put out in our community was that they were closing, and which, we didn't see anybody out at that hospital hardly, because that's what... And then they came out and said, no, we're not closing, we're downsizing, we're going to an ambulatory service. I mean, it all just changed. There was nothing like this on what they were actually going to do. And this is very, very enlightening, and things that we can pass on to our community. And I just want to thank you for that.
Any other questions?
As most people know, I work there. It's a great place to work. We have a great team of doctors there, and I can definitely speak to the workforce engagement, because a lot of people come and talk to me, and they're very pleased with the training. They're talking about, I had about three people today to talk about the shadowing that's going to be on Friday that I'm actually a part of. So I think you all are doing a good job.
Thank you for your support and all that you do every day.
Let me ask you to, if you'll furnish to Ms. Rao a name and a phone number in case somebody that's watching this wants to ask a question, so in the coming weeks they can pose that question to you. Let me just make two other comments. I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have something you want to say?
I just had a couple things. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me, you know, I had occasion to look at the renderings earlier. I had to come down and sign a check for somebody, and I was showing the renderings. And I made the observation, the existing building looks old. I'm sure that was the right building for that time. But the building that I think that we ought to be striving for, and this may satisfy that, is what I call the Ethan Allen look. You can't tell when it was built, so that 20 years from now, it still looks inviting, fresh, and a place for people to go. That's number one. Let me just talk a little bit about our friends that speak other languages. I got a grandson. I've learned more from my grandson than I ever learned from my children. And he goes to school in Howard County, and he goes to school with many, many children that are not from this country. And he was telling me a story about... And he was telling me a story about teaching one of his classmates in pre-K how to count to 20. I said, "Well, why are you doing that?" He said, "Well, he doesn't speak English. He's from Mexico." And I said, "Well, Aiden, you know some Spanish." He says, "He doesn't speak Spanish. He speaks Mexican." And you know what? I didn't realize that there is a subtle difference in the two languages, but this is a five-year-old telling me that, so I learn something every day. But, again, I applaud you for reaching out to the different diverse cultures we have in the city. We've got many, and the more we reach out to them, the more they will be involved, and get involved on the volunteer side, which is important. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trudy, just a couple of things that I thought you all should be aware of. I had the opportunity to run into two employees that worked at the hospital, and actually a volunteer as well, and made statements that things were a lot better. They felt like they had a job the next day, they weren't going to bed at night, waking up wanting to know if they were going to go to work. I think the communications has been well, but, I mean, that's three individuals within, I guess, the last two and a half weeks that I ran across, and actually came to me and brought it up. They were pleased with the open dialogue, they're very pleased with HR, I think, the things that you're doing, and that's getting out, which is important. And I wanted to make sure I pass that on to you all. Just quickly, you know, I want to make sure people understand, and maybe you should highlight that just a little bit more, about the volunteer programs. I think that's important for the community to be involved, that wants to be involved. And I know that that was one of the committees, but I just wanted to give the opportunity to respond.
So, the person who knows most is sitting right next to you. And between the pastoral services that she and her team provide, and we're always trying to recruit small pastors to provide care, we hosted the Laurel Pastoral Group recently, and we actually are going to re-host another pastoral group in Laurel. So, the more that we can get them engaged and have them minister, not just to come to see a patient once in a while, but actually be a part of our volunteer services in a more integrated, organized way, the better it is. Also, we know, because we are surrounded by senior facilities, a lot of our seniors really look at the care, that they volunteer at the hospital, they give them meaning and it's a purpose. And that is so important, that we continue that. I will share one of my thoughts, and thanks, Darrell, for including it into our new design. When you come in, it's going to be bright and cheery, and you're going to have a cafe. It's going to be a nice place for, you know, families to come in. Our volunteers will continue to be able to work there. They greet the patients, they talk to families, continuing to have them engaged in the services, having them up in the surgical area, having them assist in the ED, and also having them assist in other areas. So, we would not be able to provide a level of certain services if our volunteers weren't engaged at the front desk, engaged in a gift shop, engaged in almost every area of the hospital, to continue to provide encouragement and for some compassion for the patients that come from the door. So, I've given a promise to the auxiliary as well as volunteer services, we absolutely need you. Our new plan includes you, and we also, as volunteers are rotating through, I know some of them are getting too old to come, we are needing to refresh with new volunteers. And also, we provide a service to the high schools and the other schools. A lot of these kids have to do community service. So, it's really nice to get them in a healthcare environment, and to provide that level of community service, as well as part of the Laurel High School, to provide an outlet for the community of the...
I'd just like to add also that we have a partnership now with the Application Research Laboratory. It's a Howard County school, and they are a school that helps, that works with healthcare profession students that are interested. And they come five days a week. This is their second term of coming. They were here in a previous administration, and it's worked out great. We have students from Laurel High School, Reservoir, Paint Branch, I mean, all over, Pilate. We have really a great, great program, not because I run it, but, but we do have a lot of, we have a lot of people that come, and a lot of people, a lot of the seniors actually also volunteer at the Beltsville Senior Center that's next door. And Dr. Hall was over there speaking, they came and talked about you and said, "We're going to, we're going to get more volunteers over there." So, it's been great.
So, two other questions marked on here, and again, I think you talked about it a little bit, but I want to make sure people understand the mental health piece of this, which is crucial for this community and others. So, if you'd comment on that.
So, as I spoke before, one of the deficiencies has been our community availability, as well as the number of providers and access to a lot more community services. If, it's all saying prevention needs cure, and if we're able to prevent destabilization, if we're able to provide the psychology needs, if we're able to have patients not blood out of medications, if we're able to provide more social services, if we're able to do more substance abuse, we may be able to prevent the needs for those patients to have to be in a hospital for three to 10 days, inpatient behavioral health, for a unit. Now, again, our partners around the state provide those services, and we will continue if we need to, to transfer those inpatients to Power, to Holocross, to Adventist, the doctors are looking at opening up some beds. So, we will continue to be able to send those patients, but really working on the prevention side and the support side, to try to hopefully not utilize those services and keep the patients healthy.
I just want to say now, more than ever, with all that's going on, we need to make sure that we continue to move. I know Councilmember Lehman is very interested as well. My last question, and probably just my one criticism that I have to point out, within the document, talks about the hospital services again, as everyone is well aware. I have real concerns with numbers that we refer to back in 2012, when it was under Dimensions, who was running the system into the ground. Those numbers were, you know, I think we're going to see people using these facilities, and I think you're going to see those numbers go up now that the university is in charge. But, my one piece that I've always said, when we talk about the numbers, when they were back under Dimensions. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Hall, I want to thank you and the staff that came, the residents came to listen, and there's a lot of members here from the different steering committees that have worked on this. Thank you for coming. And I'm sure we'll have a future report. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We have an update, sir. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn for five minutes.
I call the Seventh Meeting of the Mayor and City Council to order. If you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber to my right. I reserve the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item this evening, and each speaker will have three minutes to speak. If everybody will rise for the — whoops. Did Reverend go home? Okay. Everybody will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to agenda item number four. Call the roll, Ms. Ralph.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Laz?
Here.
Mayor Mau?
The — we will defer approval of minutes to the fifth meeting of January 22nd and sixth meeting of February 12th until the next Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, March 12th, 2018. So the next item is approval of minutes of the closed session on February 12th, 2018, which was held to consult with council for legal advice. With the pleasure of the council.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls, to have a second.
Mr. President, I second it.
Thank you. Mr. Sidnor, any discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Ralph.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Laz?
Yes. Agenda item number six, Report of the City Administrator. Mr. Flemingan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the city council, this is the first report from the city administrator's office that is intended to pass on information to the city council and the public on activities involving city departments. At each meeting, I will attempt to spend five to 10 minutes highlighting the efforts of each department in dealing with issues, concerns, and their significant accomplishments on behalf of the Laurel city residents and businesses. Let me take a few minutes and provide the following information for this first report. Since the beginning of the — excuse me, the legislative session, the chief of staff and clerk of the council have been attending the meetings and hearings of the Maryland General Assembly and our delegation in order to provide updates on the status of legislation that affect the residents and businesses of Laurel. In particular, they have attended and helped organize the hearings on the Marcus Culvert Law, a bill to help make our employees safer while they're working in our rights of ways. Appreciation is extended to all of our employees, officers, and elected officials, and many other agencies who participated and testified in support of our efforts on this bill. So far this season, we have experienced 10 snow events costing approximately $52,000 to clear snow and ice from our roads and sidewalk. I have met with our Budget and Personnel Services Director, Michelle Saylor, and have determined that at this point in time, at this point in time, that no changes to our budget for snow removal is necessary. However, as you well know, when we have warmer weather this time of the year, March could be a problem for us with snow removal. But again, at this point in time, we don't see any changes in the form of transfers to our snow budget. I would like to extend my appreciation to Public Works, the Police Department, and Parks and Recreation for their tireless efforts during these snow events. As you are aware, we've been dealing with small cell legislation. This is the legislation that would enable distributors of equipment to handle data transmission using devices that would be installed in our rights-of-way mainly on traffic lights. We have reviewed legislation that was adopted by the city of Gaithersburg and found that legislation to be a little cumbersome for our purposes. We are currently reviewing the legislation that was discussed several meetings ago. We have asked for our attorneys to review this legislation, and today they came up with an issue because of changing technology and changing patterns on Capitol Hill. We also became aware fairly recently that at the state level, a bill that would potentially eliminate our efforts and our rights to manage what — how our rights-of-ways are used by these corporations and utilities. So we are currently reviewing those. We have an appointment set up with our technical attorney to go over the happenings at the state level as well as with our pending legislation. Right now, it is anticipated that we will be presenting this body with proposed legislation that despite what may be happening at the state level, the recommendations from Mr. Cobb and our technical attorney is to go ahead and pass our own legislation. So you will be seeing this fairly shortly. We will also be bringing in our technical attorney to help with decision-making on this proposed legislation at the work session. So we expect that this will probably take place sometime late next month. As you all are probably painfully aware, the Baltimore Gas Electric Company suffered a major failure of their gas supply system in the city of Laurel affecting upwards of 500 residents and businesses in the city. To date, they're reporting less than 20 units that do not have gas, and that is primarily because the units are unoccupied or the owners of the units are awaiting professionals to either replace or repair units. The gas system has been restored in its entirety, and we are preparing to coordinate meetings with the Baltimore Gas Electric Company and possibly the WSSC to go over details on the restoration of our streets and sidewalks that were damaged as a result of their efforts to repair the system. During this event, our new EOC, Emergency Operations Center, was opened and remained open for the entire event period, and it did have some glitches, but all in all, it performed very well and in some cases far exceeded our expectations. As you are, again, no doubt aware, a Prince George County police officer with 17 years of service to Prince George County, lost his life responding to a call while he was off Sergeant Mehad Ramzen, and I apologize if I butchered his name, but he was laid to rest on Friday. His services were attended by the Laurel Police Department Honor Guard, Mayor Mau, and Chief McLaughlin. May he rest in peace, and may God protect and provide for his family. The canteen that was displayed at our EOC grand opening is all but — has been all but placed in service. We expect in the next two weeks it will be in service and ready to respond to situations as well as support the efforts of the auxiliary at the fire department and the city's special events. You may have noticed around town that there are blue markers that are coincident with fire hydrants in our streets. These markers are to draw the attention of the operators of fire apparatus to the fact that there is a hydrant there. We employed these devices years ago, but they were installed in the center line and were affected by snow plows, which, for the most part, eradicated every one of them. So we staggered them onto the sides of the road so that they would be more protected by the plows. If you haven't noticed them now, you're probably not driving around the city at night. They perform very well. I'd like to extend my appreciation to the Public Works Department for their efforts. Public Works is also installing signs on storm drain openings in the city, reminding people that the water that goes into those storm drains eventually ends in the bay. We're encouraging them not to pollute. We have also finished the department council briefings, and that, sir, is my report. I'll take any questions either at my office or after this meeting this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Flemingan. Move to agenda item number seven, Report of the Mayor and City Council, and tonight we'll start with Mr. DeWalt.
Good evening. This past weekend, I attended my 18th year doing the Deep Creek Dunk up in western Maryland for Special Olympics. This year, we ended up with 66 members, the highest total in the event, and members from the Laurel Fraternal Order of Police also attended. And combined with the two teams, we raised well over $21,000 for Maryland Special Olympics, and I want to congratulate the — and the support that the Laurel FOP members gave to our team up there. That pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I attended a number of the Black History celebrations around the city, and I just wanted to close with the domestic violence. You know, it's so sad that you hear about so many people that are losing their lives as a result of domestic violence. Most of you all know that I'm a survivor myself, and my baby was killed in 95. I just think there needs to be a lot more discussion around it, and not just when someone is hurt, and not just for this council, but throughout the community, throughout the entire county, and all of the surrounding counties, because there are people that are losing their lives senselessly. And it's just — it's really sad when you hear about things like this. Really, my heart goes out for the officers and all of the frontline people that come to air aid, because it was a Prince George officer that saved me when I went through abuse, and I'm forever indebted to all of the law enforcement. But I just say that we have to break the silence in order to break the cycle. It's a big deal for me, and I don't really — haven't really been talking about it here lately. I do a lot of meetings, and I talk with a lot of community people about it, but we really, really, really need to address it because it's just sad. That and mental illness is just such a big deal. People are dying, kids are dying, you know, they should be able to go to school safely. And it's just really just very disappointing when you cut on the television and you have all of these schools and people coming in and just shooting people up. You go to school to educate, learn, and it's just sad. So I just say that educate yourself about mental illness and educate yourself about domestic violence. I hear the chief and the mayor say all the time that when you see something, say something. When you know someone is going through abuse, say something. Call somebody, call for help, because they can't call. I know for me, I used to walk around with a phone number in my shoe for more than 20 years, and it's just by the grace of God that I made it out. My baby did not survive, and it's just really sad. So I just ask everybody just to educate yourself about abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Mr. Sidnor?
Thank you, Mr. President. On February 18th, I attended a Black History program, the Laurel Senior Department, with the mayor and the city council members, Ms. Nicholas, Mr. Small, yourself, Mr. President. Also, on the 18th of February, I was a guest speaker at the Capitol Guardian Youth Challenge Academy. It's located here in Laurel. The purpose of that academy is a life intervention program for dropouts to reintegrate in the education system. It's sponsored by the District of Columbia National Guard, but we also have one here in Maryland also sponsored by the Maryland National Guard in Aberdeen for at-risk youth that's dropping out of high school and is prepared to get their GED and things of that nature. It's a very good program. Also, on May 22nd, excuse me, on February 22nd, I'm ahead of myself here, I attended the Mayor Mobile City Hall Event at Emerson Apartments on Cherry Lane. It was very informative. The mayor laid out the city hall, what we do here, and meet the residents of our community. And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sidnor. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make this brief before my voice leaves me again. I had the opportunity to work alongside members of the council and city staff in assisting those city residents and families who were impacted by the water main, gas outage, and providing meals and other support to them. I also had the opportunity to attend the Homeland Emergency Preparedness Committee, which is a committee formed by the Maryland Municipal League, where we are working on putting together public service announcements and other information outlining best practices in response to the ongoing heroin and opioid crisis that we're experiencing across the country. At the summer conference, that many municipal elected officials across the state will be attending this summer, there'll be workshops, again, and best practices discussed as we try to get a grip on this terrible epidemic. I attended, along with my council members, as you've heard, the Laurel Lakes Apartments Black History Celebration. In addition, I also attended the Laurel Business Networking Event that was held right here in Chambers, had an opportunity to meet and talk with a number of business owners here in the city. And I'll tell you quite honestly, we have a wide range of businesses and business owners who are very, very eager to display their services across the city. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Over the last 10 days, a lot of meetings, had the Tuxent River Commission meeting in Annapolis. We had the House Bill, I call it the Marcus Culvert Bill, in Annapolis. The mayor probably expand on that, but there was a good turnout. We had the Laurel Police Department Quarterly Awards at Friendship Hall. Congratulations to all the award winners. We had about 160 people, 150 or 160 persons show up for the dinners. That caterer was furnishing 250 meals three times a day to the workers. So they were getting fed because they were working round the clock. Had the privilege also to attend Doug Peters and Geraldine, our representative from Bowie, their town hall meeting over at the Tabernacle. And we had the — let me just say this, it takes a village sometimes to do things the right way. I think we need to thank all the citizens who were deeply affected by the recent gas outage in the city of Laurel. They lived for more than 10 days patiently awaiting until Baltimore Gas Electric complete their work to get their homes back to a safe operating environment. I think I made the comment to one of the senior personnel from Baltimore Gas Electric, we didn't want something to go bang, which is always a possibility when you get water and debris in the lines. They also had to share their parking spaces to accommodate the many Baltimore Gas Electric trucks and equipment. They were parked down at the pool, and thanks to Monsignor Mike Maloney for lending the parking lot at the Kiesler Center. And finally, thanks to the Baltimore Gas and Electric personnel, they were working 12 on and 12 off, round the clock, and they did a good job. They just didn't have to purge the lines of water and debris, they actually had to replace lines and valves. Okay, so there was a lot of work went on. And again, I think we're very, very lucky. We had a good response from Baltimore Gas Electric. Don't ask me how the water got to lines, I don't know yet, but I'm sure we'll find out. We've invited Baltimore Gas Electric to come in a couple of — a couple more meeting cycles to come and give us a summary, what I call — they call it a debrief. And with that, I'll pass it to Mayor. Oh. You done?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I want to thank Marty, our city administrator. We're going to thank the president as well for allowing that. We're going to attempt to try to do that each meeting, let council know things that may be outstanding, also the general public on what staff is doing in between those two weeks and the council meetings. So thank you, Marty, for that. Did have the opportunity to attend the Prince George County Budget Listening Session at the high school the other — last week, and interesting, first document I read is $9.5 million deficit for FY19, so hopefully they'll find some money. I did have the opportunity to testify in Annapolis on several bills, and I want to thank Ms. Crook and Ms. Ralph for making sure that we got things taken care of down there. They're very knowledgeable at Annapolis and provide a lot of good information to the council while they're down there. You did hear about BG&E, the issues. I'm not going to go into all of that again. I just want to thank the citizens, and I want to thank the council and the city staff for the work they did. We had our EOC opened up around the clock. Police Department is very involved as well, our Department of Park and Recreation. Luckily, we didn't have to put anybody up. We did open up showers because some were not able to get showers because of the gas loss. We provided backup support at several of our park areas where they were able to put materials, and then down at the swimming pool, you heard what went on there, that was overtaken by them. I look forward to not only the BG&E briefing, but also the briefing when it all comes together on what we did here in the city to make sure that things went well and whether there's areas that we need to take a look at. So but can't be more proud than the work the city staff did around the clock. So, but can't be more proud than the work the city staff did around the clock and a lot of things, you know, were not seen by the general public. So I want to acknowledge that and thank them and thank the council in particular for showing up to help pass out hot meals that night. So everybody kind of pulled together and the community itself, we just being patient. I know it was very difficult, but we thanked them as well. Want to thank Councilman Sidnor for the opportunity to attend the, at the Laurel Senior Apartments, the Black History Month and program. Excuse me. The, did have the opportunity to attend the Board of Directors of the Laurel Hills Homeowners Association Meeting regarding Mag Lev Discussion at the Firehouse, as well as the Business Networking Event that occurred here at city, at city hall that same evening. I want to thank our department for taking care of that. We had, I guess, over 50 businesses here. And again, it's our way of trying to make sure people and businesses in particular know what we have to offer and the things that we can provide to them, working with them hand in hand. As well as the second part of the Local Volunteer Donations Management Course. Thank the First Baptist Church and thank members of the council that participated, as well as Steve Allen, who will now be able to teach that course as well to others in the community. It's a vital piece of our emergency management operations when something goes down to have that component there. So just a couple of announcements. The University of Maryland Laurel Regional Hospital Networking Symposium will be held in the JR Conference Room at the hospital on February the 27th. And then I want to remind everybody on March the 4th, which is Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00, you can come here to city hall. It's the annual open house. So we'll be here from 1:00 to 4:00. There'll be many service organizations, many different elected officials, be your mayor and council will be here. So the entire city hall will be open to everybody on Sunday, March the 4th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Do want to make an announcement, we're going to release tomorrow, so I'm going to read this, Mr. President, into the record here. On January the 23rd, 2017, at approximately 9:00 AM, the Laurel Police Department was notified of an accident involving a city of Laurel Department of Public Works Waste Collection Vehicle and a civilian vehicle in the area of Old Sandy Spring Road and Casula Way. Upon their arrival, Laurel Police Officers found that the city employee identified as Marcus Colbert had been struck and pinned between the waste, between the waste collection truck and the SUV. Medical assistance was rendered to Marcus, who did not survive, making him the first on-the-job city employee fatality. A detailed accident reconstruction investigation was completed by the Laurel Police Department along with members of the Maryland State Police Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Division. The Maryland Occupational Safety and Health Agency was notified, responded, and conducted an investigation. Upon the completion of the investigations, the entire incident report and the supporting documentation was provided to the Prince George County State's Attorney's Office for review and for determination of applicable charges, which is standard practice throughout the state. On January the 3rd, 2018, the Laurel Police Department received a letter from the State's Attorney's Office advising that they had determined there was insignificant evidence to support any violations of the Maryland transportation laws or criminal laws, and therefore they declined to prosecute this case, resulting in no charges against the driver of the SUV that had been struck and killed, that struck and killed Marcus Colbert. On February the 21st, 2018, family members, Laurel Police Chief Rich McGlocken, along with the family's attorney, met with the State's Attorney's Office to hear firsthand the case and why they declined to prosecute the case. Members of the family were able to ask questions regarding the case as well. I made a promise to, to the family that we would not release anything until they had, or this information, until they had the opportunity to meet with the State's Attorney's Office. It was very difficult getting all the family members together and schedules. As I stated, they did finally meet. We're releasing this information tomorrow. I'm not thrilled of what I had to read. I'm not happy with no charges. Marcus was a fine young man and we'll make sure, you know, he's taken care of and his family down the road. So, Mr. President, I do have Merrill appointments, Mike McGowan, the Community Redevelopment Authority, James Hester, Chair of the Ethics Commission, and Tony Drake of the Ethics Commission. Jim is, Hester is here as the Chair, Tony Drake is a member of the commission, they're both here. Why don't you stand up so everybody knows who you are? Want to, want to thank you.
Thanks.
You guys got the easy job. No. I want to thank you for the work you've constantly done throughout the years and appreciate you accepting again, and I'm sure there'll be a confirmation here in a minute. So thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. It's a pleasure of the council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Merrill appointments and reappointments of Mike McGowan, James Hester, and Tony Drake.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Call her on, Ms. Ralph.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Um, yes.
President Laz?
Yes. And again, thank you for your service. Move to agenda item number 10, General Public Hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 7:38. I think the only person I have signed up to speak is Thomas Andre Lahey.
It's Lahey, sir.
Yeah. State your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Thomas Andre Lahey. And when I am here on the East Coast, I reside at 121.
Yeah, you turn the mic, is it on? Just push it till it goes green. There you go.
Voila. My name is Thomas Andre Lahey. And when I'm in town on the East Coast, I live at 121 Second Street, Unit Number 4, Laurel, Maryland 20707. And I've lived in Laurel on and off for almost 20 years now. I'm currently a Nevada licensed driver. And my driver's license is right here. I'm also a disabled citizen with a Medicare card, which is right here. And I have no notes prepared today, this evening, but I'm fairly moved by what I heard Ms. Nicholas talk about, domestic violence. Sometimes start from home. And I have a home in Florida in Tamarack, the Woodlands Country Club, which is not far from the shootings at our high school. I've also been affiliated with the Laurel City Police Department under the command of Captain DeWalt. And I want to thank you, sir, for your help over the years, for the many mental health cases that have come across your field of vision. It's my intention to continue to be helpful to the city of Laurel, its residents, and people who visit this wonderful place to live, and try to improve my behavior, which has been less than admirable at times. And for that, I'd like to apologize publicly to those who have been affected by that. I'd also like to see the property where I live, which is the Tasty Diner, the adjacent hotel, and the home, the White House on the property, acquired by an organization and have it changed over from what I would describe as a high drug activity area and transform it into some sort of treatment facility for people who are struggling with mental health and substance abuse and alcoholism. And I know that I'll get yelled after this, but I am a proud member of Alcoholics Anonymous, and I go to meetings on Main Street of Florence. I'm also a key holder at the Crossroads for Recovery at 102 Washington Boulevard. And they're covering alcohol and drug activity myself. Mary Mo, thank you very much for your service to the city of Laurel. And if I can ask that, they're appointing somebody to be in the position to be paid or not paid. You help with mental health crises, are responding so we can avoid any tragedy that may involve the police and mental health case type of people who are often referred to as crazy or of that nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, if no one else signed up to speak at the general public hearing, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at, the general public hearing at 7:42. Move to agenda item number 11, Fourth Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 2-18, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel opposing the high-speed superconducting magnetic levitation system between Washington DC and Baltimore, Maryland. For the title and to the record for the fourth reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:42. And the first person I have signed up to speak is Cindy Curtis. Ms. Curtis, if it states your name and address for the record.
Up.
No, no, up at the microphone. You'll be on television.
It's the top of it, just pulled down, sir.
It should bend down. There you go.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Cynthia Curtis. I live in Maryland City, 3275 Sudlersville South, Laurel 20724. I've been a resident of Maryland City since 1975 in the same house. And I appreciate the time and I will try to be as succinctly as possible. I was just looking at the maps that are made available by the Mag Lev project. Not only is the proposed J1 tunnel, I believe the west line of the two that are remaining of the six that were proposed, that most people in my neighborhood whose houses would be destroyed near the water tower, just are beginning to hear about this. But not only is it my house, but I'm looking now at the map and it's also my business, my business. I didn't know that five minutes ago until I just found this. That same J1 line is right across the street from where I'm opening a 16-bed acute care detox. So it's affecting me personally and professionally at this point. I am a very progressive person. I, I welcome change, I embrace it, and I do the best that I can do in my professional life, as well as my personal and family life, to assist people to look at the, you know, the positives. And I don't see anything positive about this. I attended a meeting a couple of days ago and I'm learning, I'm really in a steep learning curve at this point. But the ridership is gauged for individuals or families that have an average earning income of 175,000 to 300,000, 350,000 a year. And that would be nice if it was in our neighborhood or in our town, but that's few and far in between and we wouldn't have the luxury of increasing our home value of our property because we have a Mag Lev stop right at the corner. That's not the case. So they talked about the ridership, that 55% of the current cars on the road should be the cars that will be vacated because they'll be taking the Mag Lev. Of course, they'll have to drive to either DC, Baltimore, or the airport, right where my business is, to take that. And so there's so, there's so much information that's coming out that I'm learning about. Right across the street from my house, and I do want to say this, is a, is a neighbor who comes out on when the weather is good, and she's going to be 109 this September, and it will take their home. And it's the only flat part of Maryland City up by the water tower. So it's, I'm, I'm opposed to this progressive plan. It's, I believe there have been 13 projects around the world, two or three which are still functional, and I think one of them is economically failing. There are, there's no, no good history here to really show. And as a nurse myself, I know, you know, we have the FDA that does their, their best to make sure that what we put in our body medicinally and over the counter meets our standards in this country, although we're adopting the information that is being given to us that we're so easily accepting, so we don't have to spend the money on research from Japan. So there's just a lot of wrongs with this. And I'll be around more. I'm hoping that there'll be more forums that were made available. The very first time I heard about this was the evening that the, one of the last session, and I just looked, there were five sessions within 11 days in 2017, from the 14th to the 25th of October. I had just come back from travel to the Middle East, India, and I had the news on and they said there's a meeting about the Mag Lev. I had a picture of it on my refrigerator, I'm a progressive person, and it's happening right now at the high school, so I couldn't get to it. And so I'm here with some interested parties that are also very concerned about their neighborhoods, all along from Baltimore, Washington. But we hope that there's more opportunities. The letters that I have sent to MTA have not been answered, have not been responded to. And, you know, I think that information needs to go out. And I also just learned that the flyers were sent to a Boys and Girls Club, et cetera. Thank you so much for the time, and I'll yield.
Cindy, let me ask you a question. So you're in favor of the resolution that we have prepared that opposes Mag Lev?
Opposes it, yes. I am in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Paul Bessler. Is Paul here?
I don't know. I'm deciding I'm going to speak or say anything.
All right, Paul. How about Brian Smith?
That's me.
Did you want to speak, sir?
I signed as well, too, but I'll go speak.
Brian, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
I was Mary Mo. My name is Brian Smith. Address is 12125, I have a passion for Laurel, Maryland 2078. And definitely pays a reason, I guess, but I'm a simple, simple. I guess, what I have to say, I guess, is that I'm a person into technology in general. I mean, I'm always, I like technology, but when you learn about how it affects your home, then it's like you start thinking a little bit. The Mag Lev train runs with plans, and it starts running right through my house. I've come from downtown for a bit, so it's my first time. I'd like to learn more about what some plans are in opposition. But altogether, I know that, you know, our family is really passionate, right? Because, you know, we've been in the world for about 20 years, in the same location. We love it, it's perfect. My kids can run up there, it's cool, right here. They're able to go through your own entry. Train coming fast, you know, right with the tools, too. We made a large investment in being in town, we love the same. Yeah. Do I even? Yeah. It's looking awesome. Let's go.
All right, thanks, Brian. Have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I did not sign up to speak, but I would be happy to speak. My name is Barry Siegel, 3357 Cranberry South, Laurel, Maryland. And that's in the Maryland City subdivision, just a couple of blocks away from another one. I've flown over northwest Texas, southern Arizona, southern New Mexico. Wide open spaces, cities very far apart, great place for superconducting, super high-speed railway. As an engineer, I like high technology, but we have to be practical. Going several hundred miles, it makes sense. Going 40 miles from Baltimore to DC in a highly populated area where we already have a train, actually we have three trains, I've been on one of them. The Northeast Regional is an Amtrak train, it's 110, 115 miles an hour, I've been on that one. From the areas from Bowie down to New Carrollton and DC, there's the... There's the Essella, which I think you go at 150 miles an hour, I don't know if they really drive it at that speed, I've not been on it. And also the Metroliner, which I believe is 125 miles per hour. So to put in a super-high speed rail to shave off 15 minutes and to spend several billion dollars to do it, which would take, I think, centuries to pay back, I don't believe the figures that the railroad company is telling us, I think it's a bad idea.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir, if you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Yardley. I am, I live at 246 Spring Gap South, Laurel, Maryland, 20724, also in the Maryland City subdivision. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak to the council and to the mayor. I am pleased, I was misinformed, I am pleased to know that, that the mayor and the council are against, at least from the Maglev in our area. When my family was discussing it earlier this evening, I advised them that not only does the Maglev go from Baltimore to DC, but ultimately the plan is to get it up to New York. And as this gentleman just said, we already have plenty of transportation options between Baltimore and DC and also between DC and New York. I have friends who live at the top side of Maryland City, not too far from the water tower, who would most likely be impacted. It's my opinion that, that the whole of the community there would be impacted some way. Some of the maps I have seen have indicated that there would be tunneling underground, that would come above ground by the Maryland City Park, which I don't know, but we need to get rid of parks to sustain the Maglev. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have another person to sign up to speak in the back, come forward, state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Williams and I live in the community of Montpelier Hills, aisle 11626 Tuscany Drive. And, um, our community is learning about Maglev and we are, our first option would be no build, um, that the J1 west route will come directly through our community, putting approximately 110 homes at risk of seizure by imminent domain. We are concerned about the fact that our natural resources, the woods, the streams, the wildlife, all the reasons that we moved into that Montpelier Hills community, the reason why a lot of us have stayed for 15, 20, 30 years, will be destroyed, irreparably harmed because of this train. And so we are trying to do what we can to get the word out. There are a lot of people in our community, um, who don't know that their home is at risk. And even though they had open houses and whatnot, the word hasn't seemed to filter down. So we are doing what we can to get that word out. And I do want to take a second to thank Mayor Moes for coming to our, um, information session that we had at the Laurel VFD. And appreciate the fact that the council is, uh, going against Maglev. And we just want to say thank you for that because it feels as though we are fighting an uphill battle. And many people were concerned at that meeting that, um, the representatives were speaking as though this was a done deal. And they didn't know whether to, after leaving that meeting, to talk to a realtor or a lawyer to make sure that they could get fair market value for their property. So, um, we support this, I just want to get that on the record. And we have folks from Montpelier Hills who are at the meeting who are trying to get the word out. And we just want to thank you for putting this resolution forward and for future efforts opposing this train, which is not going to provide, we think, hardly any benefit to the citizens of Laurel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vivian Mitchell, I live in 12310 C-Phil, Laurel 20708. I'm very concerned about the Maglev because I'm right there in the box where they will destroy the homes. I'm concerned because I too, the meeting that you had at Laurel High School and the documentation that you gave us at that time stated that this was a very costly project. Now, I'm not opposed to change, but I am opposed to this. It is very costly and it has not been proven to be commercially viable anywhere in the world. Is there something special here in Laurel that means that they could make it viable? Because when they say you need, it's 15 minutes from DC to Baltimore, we're already 15 minutes from DC, from Laurel to Baltimore, so I can't see where this would be beneficial to anybody. So we're concerned, and as well as my neighbors, we're all concerned because we'll lose, most of us have been there quite some time. We've upgraded our homes to make our homes very comfortable to live in. So if we have to move out just for this and it's still not commercially viable, does that make any sense to anybody? It doesn't make sense to us. And so we're really against this. We would like to get the word out more to everybody so that everybody would come in and weigh in on this whole situation because it is disturbing to everybody. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at 7:58. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2-18, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel opposing the high-speed superconducting magnetic levitation system between Washington and Baltimore.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to note that we did receive a letter today from the Baltimore/Washington Rapid Rail, opposing resolution number 2-18, and it's signed by David Henley, project director, Baltimore/Washington Rapid Rail.
Okay, let me, um, we'll offer a friendly amendment here, a couple of friendly amendments. And, uh, you'll have to bear with me, I need to get it on the record. In the resolution, in the second whereas, we have added now Baltimore/Washington Rapid Rail, BWRR. In the, um, third whereas, second line, I've deleted FRA and added BWRR. In the fourth whereas, following city in the second line, I have added, and Northern Prince George's County residents. The fifth whereas, I have added on the first line, following through Northern Prince George, Northern Prince George's County. And the sixth whereas, on the first line, it reads through the communities around the city may, deleting will, negatively impact property values. The seventh whereas, the exorbitant amount of money that will be required to design, delete, and construct and maintain the SMA GLEV project. And on and on. Go to the next page that I have. If that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. On the ninth whereas, taxpayers need better infrastructure and upgraded services, not a commitment of funds for another system that serves no one in the city of Laurel or the residents living in Northern Prince George's County. Next whereas, we understand monies for the project now are being spent on the project from the infrastructure loan programs set up for the sole purpose of financing major infrastructure project and that the BWRR has stated they will pay these monies back, but the mayor and city council still find that SMA GLEV is ill-conceived. The next whereas, and this is a new whereas added, whereas the mayor and council find the Baltimore/Washington Parkway East or West routes, and these are the ones that bracket the Baltimore/Washington Parkway, either above or below ground gives those in the area concern because of possible damage to those living in the communities and possible impacts to the environmental, to the environment. And in the last now, fourth line down, welfare of the residents of Northern Prince George's County. Those are my amendments and I'll ask the maker and the second to, uh, if they would consider those and accept those. Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Smalls?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So first of all, we're going to vote on the amendments and then we'll vote on the motion. Call or roll, Ms. Rowell, for the amendments.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
The amendments, that's everything written in red, correct?
Yes, yeah, call.
Okay, yes, I'll vote for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sidnor?
I vote yes as well.
President Les?
Yes, now before we vote on the actual resolution, the mayor wants to make a comment.
Couple of comments.
I just want to make a couple of comments. We, we did receive, um, the WB, or, I'm sorry, uh, BWRR letter this afternoon, late this afternoon. This is our fourth hearing and, um, I was surprised that it came at the late hour because they've been, I thought they've been at most of our, our meetings. And I think the amendments try to address some of that as well. I, I agree that the, um, the Amtrak trains, nobody sitting up here is against regional transportation. And, and I've said that before. But I think, um, what we're seeing here is, is just, um, not good planning, it's not, you know, the money being spent. We already have the need, we already have infrastructure, we already have services that can use those, that extra money from, um, the feds or from the state. My other concern is, as they move forward, depending on what line they were to take east or west, um, those homes that may be impacted, you know, it came out the other night that it's going to be fair market value, which is a big difference. You know, when you try to get fair market value and then you try to buy something somewhere else or try to move into another community, so I think there's issues there. The environmental impact statement, I, I understand it as being done, it's being done by the company that wants to build this Maglev. I think now is the time for us to, um, send a message, um, that we oppose the, um, the align in the Maglev. I think that the 21st delegation has gone against that, the 23rd, I happen to be down in Naples to testify on two of, uh, the bills that, um, delegate Valentino Smith had put in. This goes to us, next to an elementary school, possibly. And I think the communities that are going to be interrupted, um, far outweigh the Maglev, in my opinion. There is no history of the project, they keep talking about, um, this project, but there really is, was testified here tonight, there's no, no history as well. And I don't see where, um, Laurel gets anything out of this, other than disruption, communities being torn apart and individuals being, um, possibly moved to other areas. So I think that's important. The system itself is not in the city, but part of the, the area when they talk about that they've been studying picks up part of the city of Laurel, which is why, um, I felt we should move forward with, with this. I too sent a letter to the governor, have yet to receive a response back regarding this as well. So the other piece of this is municipalities have always tried to work together. We're 27 municipalities in Prince George's County. Bee Wee was going to be highly affected by this as well as Greenbelt. They have opposed it, so we want to try to work with our other municipalities as they have worked with us. So I'd ask everyone to take that into consideration. This is a resolution, a formal action of the, of the mayor and council, and if things change, we ought to be able to change with it, a different resolution depending on what happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution as amended. Call or roll, Ms. Rowell.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
I have some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. DeWalt.
Cindy, Brian, Barry, John, Kathy, Vivian, I, my heart goes out for you and your opinion means a lot to me. This is, uh, I'm, if you don't know me, I'm a newly-elected council member. I came back in, I started in November. We had, this is the second major thing that I believe, uh, I'm voting on. The first one was a development that is going in the prettiest area you could possibly live in, which is the Patuxent Greens area, which, which has a, currently has an 18-hole golf course. It's in a floodplain and it's a beautiful area. And what happened is basically, there is happening to you. You're not being informed of everything to give an honest opinion on things and you're, you're being, um, you're being backdoored and you're not, not able to get all the information that you need. That's what happened to the people down at Patuxent Greens Country Club. They paid extra money to live there and they, they've lived there since the mid-eighties. It's a beautiful area, if you've never seen it, it has bald eagles, it has all kind of wildlife, and they paid extra to live around that parameter of that golf course. And the same thing, it's similar to this, where they have these meetings, they send out certified letters to people, no one hardly gets them. People came up here, just like you're coming up here, and you don't even live in the city, these were city residents, and a lot of them had voted for me. And they come up here and they express their anger, their concerns, that within a 40-foot to 140-foot area, they're going to build three-decker townhouses. So when they go out, instead of looking at a beautiful area, they're going to look at another residence where they can't even see the sky hardly anymore because of what's being built there. 450 units are being built, going to be built. If they pass the FEMA regulations, the Prince George's County, uh, licensing, and the Army Corps of Engineers, they're going to develop that, right in front of their eye, big tractors are going to come and dig that up and put cement, concrete, and asphalt and buildings there. One of the prettiest green spaces in Laurel. And that is pretty much what I get from you. And it's ve, it, it does, it touches me. When people come here, this is what my vision of being a public servant and, and a council member meant to me. But when they do things like this, they undercut a lot of different aspects of it. In order for the people in Patuxent Greens to get properly notified, they went before our planning commission, our planning commission gave them recommendations to get the people notified and to have a good public hearing and get your voices heard, put, there's only one way in and one way out of there. So they put a big Laurel police, I mean Laurel City billboard up there notifying every member. And at that next meeting, although they said there were only 60 people there, I counted close to 85 to 90. And the, the, the developer at the beginning of the meeting came out and said to them, "I do not want to hear any negatives about my development, all I want is solutions to it." Which started off the meeting, was offensive to me and a lot of people in that meeting. So I can understand why, Cindy, you haven't been properly educated. I'm still learning about Maglev. This is the fourth meeting we've had on it, and at the first meeting, I didn't know anything about it, but I am reading a lot more of it. And with your opinion that comes, coming here and talking about it, it makes a difference in eventually what I will vote for. If you didn't know, the environmental impact study is not supposed to be completed till 2019. 2019. Just like the Patuxent Greens development, we have plenty of developments that are currently going on in the city of Laurel, and we have plenty that have just been completed. We have a lot, a lot of housing. We're to the point we don't even need, we've maxed out on our apartments. But we're getting more and more developments being made. And I was the only one that voted against that development in the Patuxent Greens Country Club. But until now, until I get more information about Maglev, and like I told you, it does mean something when people come here, who don't even live in the city, and speak on it. Until I get more information and I get better, better educated, I'm going to abstain from my vote.
Mr. Sidnor?
I got a statement also. I'm like Mr. DeWalt, this is my first time, this is a big decision for me as well. And I hear a lot of mixed reviews about it. I support the economy as well, and I also support local transportation, but I'm learning about this Maglev as well. I get statements from the developers saying they're not going to destroy homes, I hear the audience say they're going to destroy homes. So I'm going back and forth, so I don't know which way to vote. So at this time, I'm going to stand until I get more information about this, so I can make the best decision that I can be satisfied with as well. So thank you, Mr. President.
President Les?
Yes, let me just say something. The, the, as was said, it's the fourth public hearing we've had on this issue. The, there are some traumatic impacts to the, what I call the Greenway, which is the final two routes that they've decided, the east side or the west side. Neither one of them are acceptable. I mean, the Patuxent River Commission, of which I'm a co-chair right now, we have discussed this for 60 days, last two meetings, and we're concerned. And I, as I pointed out at the, at the meeting, the last meeting, we had it on a work session, if you look at the pictures of how this thing looks when it's above ground, it sits on concrete piers. There's no trees underneath it. I'm sure that's so they can get to it, if they got a problem. There are real issues here. I mean, some of the council members have done some research, have asked, you know, who needs to go from Baltimore to Washington in 15 minutes? This was discussed in California years ago. The best route was from Los Angeles to Las Vegas, because there wasn't a right-of-way problem then. I mean, they're building a high-speed rail in California right now that's going to be into the multiple tens of billions of dollars. I don't know how they're going to afford, it's probably going to fall off into the ocean. But again, I, the, as the mayor said, he has written a letter to the governor, the mayor opposed it, and again, this resolution indicates that at this point, I need to sort of slow things down with this group. You've got 20-plus million dollars of your dollars you're spending, and the $5 billion to build it will come from the Japanese. And somebody should be asking a question, why? Because it creates a market for the technology in the cars. And the one that's running in Japan right now is only 30 miles long, and it runs 40 times a year. It doesn't even run every day. The only one that's been successful is in Singapore, to the airport. And the reason that one is successful is because the government's paying for it. And again, we've, we've, you've heard, we've got, got Amtrak, we've got Metro Liner, we've got the Acela, and none of them run at speed, even on the Penn Line. They cannot come up to speed. So again, I voted yes, and we'll go ahead and...
Mayor Mowes?
Mayor? Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to concur with the council action, but I'm going to make a couple statements. First, I do understand both Mr. DeWalt, Mr. Sidnor abstaining because they need more information. Our, we will get more information when they request it and, and lead them to areas that they'll be able to, to review and study. This is, let me just also, because there's a lot of statements here of trying to put Patuxent Place in with the Maglev. They are entirely two different decisions. I think it's very, it is not correct. We made a change to the zone at Patuxent Place. That's all we did. That's all this council did. The rest of it, they have a lot of hoops to jump, and they have to go before the planning commission, made up of members of the community that do that, not the political group, because, you know, we sit up here, we do things that benefits us, quite frankly, to make us look good. I'm not going to do that here tonight. I'm telling you the facts. So I want everybody to understand, Maglev is one thing, it's a two, it's a 3-0 with my concurrence, we will, we will make that known and we will put that out. But Patuxent Place, I encourage you to follow that if you would like to, but that is entirely different. And I understand they're new, so, you know, I understand that it might be confusing. But I just want everybody to realize, there's nothing happening down there. They have studies to do, they have to go to feds, they have to come back before the planning commission, and then they have all of the different things that the planning committee, commission could require, and the community still has a say. So there are two different things, I just want to make sure that people aren't getting confused that may be watching at home. But I concur with that, and I thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anything else to come before the council? Meeting's adjourned.